I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll take a roll call. Jesse?
Here.
Haley?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Chris? Debbie? Eva? Michael? And I am stuck in an emergency situation and not able to be there quite yet because of an accident in traffic, so I will be attended virtually. I'm going to turn it over to Eileen. Eileen, thank you so much for coming. Eileen is from MSMA. I've asked her to come and speak to us about what the process would be like if we were to hire an interim or the full superintendent search. And so, Eileen, I'd like to turn it over to you to talk about that process, please.
Sure. Thank you, Stephanie. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all. Stephanie, I've had a couple conversations, and it's my understanding that your superintendent will be finishing his term with you June 21st. Given the short amount of time, that's about, I believe, 11 weeks that you have to find a superintendent, which is not a lot of time to find, to do a thoughtful and thorough search. This is an incredibly important decision for the board. This is your one and only employee, and so it's a search that needs to be done very thoughtfully, very thoroughly. And it should include a variety of different stakeholders throughout the process. So you have a decision to make whether you're going to enter into a full search with a consulting firm, or whether you're going to do an interim search, which is an abbreviated search. So let me talk about the interim search. As I said, it's an abbreviated search. It is conducted by the board only. It would allow you to hire a superintendent, which by law you must have a superintendent. That is Section 1051, Title 28. And it would allow you to hire a superintendent in a very shortened amount of time for a period of one year while you conduct a thoughtful and thorough search. It would mean putting out an advertisement throughout the state. You can advertise further than that, which is why the not to exceed is $3,000, because if you chose to advertise, past the state of Maine, you'd be looking at advertising educationally for AASA, which is the American Association of School Administrators, and then through school spring, those are all roughly about, that would all be about $1,800 to $2,000. The ad would not run for a very long time. Usually what we do in these situations, until, we would say, until a suitable candidate is found, it wouldn't run for the five to six weeks that a regular full search would run. The applications would come to MSMA. That is to ensure confidentiality and that applications aren't sitting on the side of someone's desk. We would handle the applications. We would ensure that the applicants, the applicants contain, send in the information that you have asked for. And then when we have a group of applications, we would send them to you in a secure web link where you would review them, you would look at them, you would choose who you're going to interview, and then you would hold the interview, and then you would choose who you're going to hire. And I want to reiterate, at no time does MSMA select the candidates to interview or select the candidate that would be your finalist and your superintendent. My job or MSMA's job would be simply to facilitate the process, make sure that you're following the Equal Opportunity Employment Act and other laws pertaining to hiring, as well as your policy GCFB. Pretty much, we do the clerical work, we do the background work, we contact the candidates, we reach out to candidates that have asked for application packets, we pick up the phone and we answer questions. All we do is facilitate the process. The board is completely in charge of selecting who they interview and who they're going to hire. The interim process could very well have you a superintendent by June 21st. Who applies for these jobs? Usually, they're retiring superintendents or their administrators that are interested in entering into the field of superintendency. So I'm going to stop there to see if there are any questions about what I've just shared.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Barely.
Yeah. That's the mic over there.
My question is, you didn't mention survey schools listing it on that site. Isn't that free already because we partner or pay into that?
Survey schools is free. School spring is not unless you have an account with them. I don't know that at this point.
So, I mean, we could list it on survey schools.
Yes, absolutely. Survey schools would be free. It would be listed across, it would be sent out to every ass, every superintendent who's serving right now, assistant superintendent. It would be sent out to our interim list. We do have a list of superintendents that are retired and interested in serving as intrums. We would send it up to those folks, and obviously, we would post it on our website. If you wanted to post it further than that, then that's where you would get into education week, AASA, and then school spring. And I don't know whether you have an account, and that's not, that's a very small fee. The AASA and end week is much more expensive.
Do you send the resumes to all the school board members?
So what would happen is that we would develop an application. The application packets would be requested by people who are interested. They fill out the application, they submit it to us, and then when we have a group of applicants or, you know, a number of applications, especially for the interim, then we would send it out to every board member. You would see their whole application packet. You would see everything from their letter of interest to the letters of their resumes. You would see the application. You would see their letters of recommendations that they're submitting. You would see everything they submitted.
Eileen, I just want to thank you for coming on this on such short notice for us. It's a huge, huge help. Can you just talk about, I know from my understanding, we've used MSMA for the last several searches for superintendents. It's my understanding that if we did use MSMA, we'd have to go through an RFP process. Can you just talk about, do a majority of schools utilize it best?
In the state of Maine, the majority of school districts do, but there are districts that do use outside firms such as AYH, BWP, NASDAQ. What they do is they will send out an RFP to a variety of search firms, and those search firms will send in their information, and you can interview them and hire them from that process. So that is another way to go. We are several, quite often involved in sending out an RFP, in responding to an RFP, and that's how we do end up getting many of these consultant jobs. But there are a variety of different firms. I certainly would help you with getting that information when you do, if you're going to do a full search. Certainly make sure that you have that information so you can reach out appropriately to other search firms to consider having them do your search.
I just want other committee members to have the opportunity to be able to ask questions because time is of the essence, and according to the statute, we do have to have a superintendent in place by June 2024. So does anybody have any questions about us utilizing MSMA?
I have questions, but not necessarily both that.
Obviously, the full search would include community forums that include listening sessions. The full search, we would recommend, I would recommend that you have an interview committee made up of parents, community members, sometimes students are included, obviously teachers, and some board members, not a quorum, that would participate in the screening of the applications and the first interview, and then they would send recommendations of candidates to the full board for those interviews. So it's a much more involved process. It's much more developing, leadership development profile, that you want to make sure that you're looking at the characteristics and the qualifications that you desired in your next superintendent, tailor your interview questions to that. We would obviously do the clerical work, advertise the vacancy, coordinate the applications and materials, and then make sure that you get all of the information, screening rubrics, screening documents, interview questions. So the full search is much more involved, and a thoughtful thorough search does take a good, a good full three months to conduct.
I guess I'm getting conflicting information. I thought you said everyone was going to get the resumes, and then you said a statement about some get the resumes, and then they'll give it to the full committee. I mean, we are each elected officials. We should each have the information, so we-
Absolutely. Everyone's going to get every piece of information if you're going to do a full search. What you would, what I would recommend is that what most districts do, and the searches I'm handling right now, is that you're going to have an interview committee made up of your constituents, of staff members, community members. Sometimes they have members from the select board involved. Sometimes students are involved. That interview committee would screen the applications and would select which candidates to interview. They would interview them, and then they would move those successful candidates forward. The board would still have all that information. This is just being very collaborative in nature as far as gaining and seeking the input from your community members and your students and your staff. So it's, in a full search, you're much more, much more inclusive of a variety of different stakeholders than just the board, and the interim search than just the board. However, in either process, the board will receive every piece of document regarding the candidate.
Eileen, I just want to add something to that. So my intent is that if the committee decides to go with the interim rep, and you and I talked about this, that we will have a community meeting in two to three weeks so that we are still hearing from the community with what do they want in a superintendent, even if we were going to interim. And you mentioned that you have some materials to be able to provide for us to be able to facilitate that, correct?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that.
And we would also reach out to Aaron Dork and get feedback from the teachers as well. So even if we don't do the full search now, if that's what we decide, we still have that ability to be inclusive with everybody.
That was a question, Stephanie, right? Or was that a statement?
Was that a question for me?
I think so.
I didn't hear it.
Even if we do an abbreviated search, it'll be, we have the opportunity to be inclusive. We can have interim.
Yes, yes, yes. Are there any other questions for me?
Eileen, can you talk about the timeframe a little bit more? I think you did, if we did go with the interim, because the entire committee would be on the hiring committee.
I am ready to post the position. I could have that done by Friday of this week. It would be a regular advertisement. We would look at what we used the last time we did your search, include, update the data on the number of students and that type of thing, post the position. I would recommend that you post the position until a suitable candidate is found. That allows you to move very quickly if you get a strong candidate right away, but it doesn't make you wait five to six weeks until the position closes. So if we did a posting on the 12th, I would hope that by the beginning of May, I'm thinking, you know, I'm looking at my calendar right now, I'm thinking by the week of May, I'm sorry, April 29th, that you would be able to review applications, take a look at them based on what's come in, and hold interviews, and hire an interim superintendent. Keep in mind, if your interim superintendent is an acting or working administrator in another district, they're going to have to get out of their contract. That's why the interim search is a little bit easier than a full-time search, but they would have to make sure that they have time to get out of their contract, because you do have to have someone in district by June 21st. So we could move as quickly as we get qualified applications.
What questions does the committee have about that timeline?
I love her optimism that we'll have a bunch of applications by the 29th.
You know, I have to be optimistic, and you never know. You never know what you're going to get. You just, I am going to be optimistic.
I think it's great.
Is there any additional training that we would have to do, Eileen, as a committee before we would start interviewing?
Yeah, there is one policy. It's the Hiring Administrator Stop. I think it's the GCFB that does require that any person who's going to be involved in the hiring, in the hiring process, must conduct, must go through the confidentiality training. That's something that I am prepared to provide for you. It's about a 45-minute training. It really just reviews the process. It discusses confidentiality, and then it asks everyone involved in any way, shape, or form in the conversation, the discussion regarding the candidates to sign the confidentiality agreement, your confidentiality agreement that your district has. And so that would be something that we would just put, choose an evening, early evening to do as part of the process.
I haven't seen before where they've done a one-year. Is that typical, to do a one-year interim?
So the hiring season for superintendents is pretty much over because they all start to lie one, and because of getting out of contracts. Some are 45-day contracts, some are 90 days, and people aren't really looking for jobs right now. So if you really want to do a full national search where you're going to reach out and, you know, really, you know, canvas the country for your next superintendent, I would recommend that you start that process in November or December of next year, because January, February, and March really are kind of the times where people are kind of looking for superintendent positions.
Well, you were optimistic that we'd get a lot of applications now, so that's good.
I'm hoping that you'll get applications for, you know, a lot. And the other thing, let me couch a lot. I think five to eight applications right now is a lot for a superintendent's position. From what we've seen coming in, if we get five to eight, that's considered a large number of applications.
I believe you explained this. So you will do, is the interim search $3,000 for MSMA, or that's with a full search?
So I said not to exceed $3,000 because I didn't know what your decisions were going to be. I don't think this, I don't think the interim search would exceed $1,000, to be honest with you. If you're going to do the interim search, the training is one hour. That's $175. There would be some fee for the handling of applications out of my office. It's per application, so it's hard to tell. I'd be surprised if this went over $1,000. I just did not exceed $3,000, not knowing where you wanted to advertise. If you're going to advertise in the state of Maine, through our website, through survey schools, that's not going to cost anything. If you're going to go out of the state, even for the interim, that's where that becomes a little bit more expensive. The average cost for MSMA to do a search is around $7,000 to $8,000 for a full search, and that's a ballpark. That depends on what you choose. We have a menu of activities that we provide. If we, if you go out to bid and we are the group, the firm that you choose, then we sit down with, we usually ask that we work with one or two leads that we work closely, and then you choose the activities that you want to have us do. So one search I did early on was $27,000, but they also brought in another search firm. We worked together with them, and then I've had searches that have been, you know, anywhere from $2,500 to about $7,000, $8,000. It just depends on the amount of work that you want us to do.
And so, Eileen, if the entire committee would be on the hiring committee, would you normally see people do second and third interviews, or do, in second part of that, do they loop in other people into it other than the board or committee?
Are you talking for interim or full search?
Intra.
The interim's usually just the board. I have, actually, sometimes they do then include the administrators because it's a short-term position. It's not, it's not a position, it's not a, you're not filling it with someone who's going to be there for, you know, several, you know, several years. So I would say you would have, interview the candidates and with a committee, and then you could have a second round of interviews with just the board. When we do conduct superintendent searches and we do include people other than board members, we remind those community members and staff members that their role is to provide feedback, but the final decision is the board's decision.
So I don't see a price listed move to initiate statewide and national search for full-time superintendent December 2024. It sounds like that could be the one that's more expensive, and that isn't laid out here. Is that right?
I didn't catch that. I'm sorry.
I'm looking at our agenda. I don't know if you have a copy of that.
Not in front of me, no.
The motion that we have is to be able to post in November or December for a superintendent. That does not mean that we would be necessarily using MSMA.
No.
The motion is just to post the position.
Okay.
Eileen, would you be using our full-time job description, or what would that look like?
Well, right now for the interim, I'd be using your job description that you have. And when you do your full search, I would certainly make a recommendation that you review the job description to make sure it's current with state law and statute, which I looked at it the other day, and it is.
Thank you. What other questions does anyone have for Eileen?
Are you, I was wondering, were you having questions from community members or no? Is that public comments different than questions, or how does that work?
We were gonna, Eileen has a time front. She squeezed us in, and she has to hop to her next meeting.
It's another search.
What was that?
I said it's another search.
Right.
We're finishing this one up, but I have to meet with them at 6:30.
So if there's no other questions from the committee members, then we're going to move on to public comments. Is there any other questions from the committee members? I'm going to go around the room and ask. Jesse?
I'm all set. Thanks, Ellen.
Haley?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Ryan?
Bill, thank you. All set.
Okay. Eileen, thank you so much again for joining us.
No, no problem at all, and best wishes in what you decide and moving forward. So just let me know when we're the other staff member.
I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye-bye, everyone.
Bye. We're now going to move on to public comments, and I want to welcome Greg Newell to opportunity to come and speak. Can someone keep time, please?
Greg Newell, I'm in. I'll speak loudly since the mic is quite far away. I've just been reading, I really appreciate the committee having, bringing MSMA in, if I said that correctly. One thing that was stated was that we have to have someone by June 21st. Now, according to Title 28, Education, Part II, School Organization, Chapter 101, 1051, Selection of Superintendents, it says, number four, it says, "Failure to Elect." If the school board fails to elect a superintendent by June 30th, the school board may appoint a competent and qualified agent, with the vice and consent of the commissioner, which we don't have one, but that's the way the statute reads, to serve in that capacity until a superintendent is elected. So I just ask the committee, let's not rush this. Let's not rush into a superintendent. Let's make sure we have a good, qualified person in. And if you went to 90 days, that'd be July 14th. And I would also like to remind, as the committee already knows, there will be no students in session during this time period of searching. I'm pretty sure one of our great principals would be more than willing to walk over the school district in the interim and take care of anything, any issues, but please, let's not rush. No one wants the committee to rush into anything. And let's make sure we do a good, qualified search and we get the best superintendent for our teachers and students. Again, 90 days from next week would put us to July 14th. If you go from today to August 16th, that's 130 days. So we have time. It's not like schools in session while we're looking, and they're out. Just take your time, find the best qualified candidate, get the parents, the teachers, the students involved. Let's all make sure we get a nice qualified candidate in the job, in the position, that will take our mail on to the next step. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'd now like to welcome Rick Burgess.
Greetings to the committee. I want to thank the committee for being quick and swift in coming to the point of putting this together to get somebody on board. I had a couple of items that I wanted to address from the agenda. One of them, a lot of it was addressed by the lady from MSMA. The question I had, and we didn't get a chance to ask her directly, is I think hiring an interim superintendent is a bad, bad idea. I think we're going to end up in the same position down the road that we're in, now the same position we were in two years ago when we had to hire an interim superintendent, and then it didn't seem that that went very well in the process of hiring a full-time superintendent. My question that I would have asked is, do we have to hire an interim superintendent by June 21st, and if we do, do we have to hire that person for a year? If we could hire that person on a basis of, you know, until we hire a full-time one, that would give us time to do a full search, which I think is important, to get the best quality candidate. She's 100% right when she said that. A lot of your good candidates are already out of the market, and they're going to out of the market even faster at this time of year. So you're probably not going to get a quality candidate unless it's somebody that's a retired superintendent that wants to step in and just fill the void for, you know, a period of time. So my recommendation would be, if it is legal and possible to- to do an interim search, now to get somebody in place, whether it be a principal we have now onboard, or somebody else, and then begin the process of hiring a permanent, full-time superintendent during the search. I have my notes here. She outlined it exactly. We need a committee with school committee, town council members, principals, teachers, and a few parents involved in the initial search, and then making the recommendations back to the board, and that's all great. But I think that should be part of the overall process for hiring a full-time superintendent. So I would give you my advice, is to think hard about which way you're going to go, and do the best you can.
Because the new business and public comments are back-to-back, I just want to open it up to anyone that didn't put their name on the sheet and wanted to talk about the new business items before we move on.
I'll test that.
Okay, close public comment for that. So now, I make a motion to proceed in the hiring of a one-year interim superintendent for Herman School Department starting mid-June 2024 to June 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So the purpose of doing an interim is two-part, then, is the way I hear it, is we don't really have adequate time to do a full search within the guidelines of 21 June, would be our first reason. And then we want to make sure that we do a full process so that we get the best candidate. So that's the dilemma, of how do we move quickly to fill the need while taking our time to make sure we get the best candidate? So there isn't a requirement to do an interim. But if we want to get, if we want to have the most options, hiring an interim gives us those options. Am I misunderstanding that?
That's right.
You're exactly right. We're not looking to rush the process at all. And given that we've had a few different superintendents over the last few years, this is going to give us the opportunity to have, make sure that we like somebody before we get them in the permanent role, absolutely. Time is absolutely of the essence. We're still going to engage community and teachers. What is it that they want in the superintendent? We'll absolutely have that worked up. But we have to get somebody in there to be able to run the schools. It will give us the time to be able to update the job description, et cetera. So you're exactly right.
So what is the drawback of doing an interim? Just try to wrap my head around it.
I guess I would ask others to weigh in on what they see the drawback to be.
I just find what she just said to be concerning, that we want to get someone in and see if we like them before hiring them. That seems like it contradicts the process.
Can I ask somebody in that public comment to reiterate something? Because they said something that I need you to hear again.
Yeah, of course.
Rick, you gave a pro and a con. And I wasn't able to write them both down.
Okay. Well, I said the pro do, pardon me, an interim in... If we could do an interim without doing it for a full year, that would be my observation, that would be the best way to go. Because I don't like what she just said, which is exactly what I was intending to talk about earlier, in that getting a person in for one year so you can see if you like them, that's a terrible way to approach it. You're losing the ability to interview candidates out there who may be available next year, but are not available now because they're already under contract. If you do it that way, I think if you're going to go interim, you get somebody that's qualified to come in and do the job for a period of time. And hopefully, it's not a year. That motion would be fine if it didn't have the one-year stipulation in it. You hire an interim, whether it be a principal or somebody that's got experience to come in for a period of months, and then you do your full search, start it whenever you want. And when you're ready to hire the person that fits the need of the community for a full-time, and you're not back where we are now, and where we would be in a year if we hire an interim for a one-year contract. Did I clear it up, or...
I think so, yeah.
I have a question, Stephanie, or maybe Jesse, I don't know. So is this interim, will that be like a contract for a year that they're signing?
Yeah, I'm trying to... I'm sorry, Steph, do you want to answer that?
No, go ahead.
So, don't quote me on this, Haley, but I believe the last contract that we had with interim, there was a timeframe that said either up to this date or when we hire a full-time superintendent. So the scale of the contract was a little flexible based on the hiring. Don't quote me on that, but I believe we're...
You think a motion that's specific for a year... I mean, I can see both sides on the flip side. Last time, I think it was only a few months before they moved to make an actual superintendent, and maybe that wasn't enough time. So on the public comment point, perhaps a year gives you a better, you know, time to let that person do the job while you're still looking, versus trying to squeeze it into three months, and then you're always chasing, you know... Some of them don't want to do it for a short period of time. If they're coming in and they're retired, and they want to do a year, so...
So rather than saying hire it for one year, could we amend it to say not to exceed one year?
Or we could just say, move to proceed in the hiring of an interim superintendent for Herman School Department starting mid-June 2024. And then we'll have another motion with the contract when we decide that we can hire. That will provide the explanation.
Actually, should it say, we need to do it now, not mid-June? We need to be looking for an interim now?
I think it's the higher, the higher superintendent of June. I think that was the intention of that.
Do you agree with that, Stephanie?
So I'm gonna... I'm gonna amend the motion and strike out the one-year requirement now and decide we can proceed in the hiring interim superintendent for the Herman School Department starting mid-June 2024.
I would put this at two, though, not to exceed... Because it needs to have some sort of parameter.
We'll set the parameter when we approve the contract. True. Yeah, the parameter would then be set when we write, approve the contract.
When they're posting it, they want to know what that looks like. So I would say not to exceed one year. Can I?
Sure. Up to one year. Up to one.
Up to one.
In a second?
I'll second that.
All right, back to discussion, I'm all set for here, so, back to discussion. I know we've talked about this, that I don't think we have to do the interim now, to make sure we have a superintendent in June, but the full-time search will want plenty of time to get all of the community and teacher, staff feedback. But we also don't want to go in looking for a full-time superintendent this season, right now. We want to get the largest and best applicants, or when that was nothing happened, we'd have...
Agreed.
So I think that one downfall of doing superintendent search now, an interim, is more for us, we don't have to do it twice. But I think that's the only downfall, which is fine.
Well, if we were taking... Stephanie had mentioned doing community feedback and staff feedback now for the interim, I mean, we could just use that same information, it wouldn't change.
We could, I just don't think it will be as... The offerings that MSMA provides is almost like an alibi card. I just don't think we can get all of the feedback for full-time in time to hire someone. So we could certainly start the process and start to get the feedback that would help with this, but I just don't think we'd have the time to get all of the feedback that we want from full-time. We want this to be a very deliberate search, and a very deliberate act of getting the information that we're looking for from the community. We can try and push that through.
Stephanie, you there?
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? She's in static.
She can only wear statues.
Oh. Can you hear us, Steph?
I can a little better, yes.
All right. Hey, Steph, any other discussion on your end? Have you been able to hear us? We amended your motion to move to proceed the hiring of an interim superintendent for the Herman School Department starting mid-June 2024, for up to one year.
Yes.
Okay, and Brian seconded that, so I don't think there's any other discussion unless you have anything you want to add?
No, the only thing is that each person has to say yea or nay. So, Jesse?
Yea.
Haley?
Yes.
Brian?
Yea.
And I'm a yes. So motion carried.
I'll move to hire MSMA to lead the search for an interim superintendent not to exceed $3,000.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Steph, can you hear us?
I can, I still have all static, but I don't have any discussion. Did anybody else, though?
We were good, I think we're...
We're at the vote point, I think, Steph.
Okay, perfect.
It's all the rules.
Brian?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yea.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, I move...
Motion carried. Can you go with the next one, please?
Yep. I move to initiate a statewide and national search for a full-time superintendent for the Herman School Department in December of 2024. I get a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Should we wait until 2024? Or, I mean, let's move forward with the interim. It goes into the conversation of, why would we wait till December when we could start the process sooner than later? Is there a reason to wait until December? Steph, I don't know if you can hear us, I'm assuming that...
No, not necessarily a reason. No, Jeff will need to decide, are we going to use MSMA for that? We're going to need to look at the job description, et cetera. So you could amend it to say no later than December 2024.
Could also just table it.
Yeah, I was thinking table.
What was that?
We were discussing possibly tabling that part for now.
Steph, why do we need to make the decision now? Is the December date for a posting? Or, I mean, we really should start the process now?
Right.
But is that, was that the date for a posting?
We can certainly table that one, and talk about it at the next full committee meeting, and then, probably. I think that that would be a better option.
Yep.
I would draw my second.
Uh, we brought two. Okay, I move to table items five C until our next regularly scheduled committee meeting.
Did somebody retract their motion, though, please?
We did, we just did.
Okay, perfect.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Any discussion? Yes.
Call it, Steph.
I vote... Okay, Brian?
Uh, yes, to table.
Haley?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
I'm a yes to table as well.
I move to adjourn.
Non-debatable move.
I get a second?
Second.
All right, Brian to adjourn?
Yes.
Sorry, no. Haley?
Yes.
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
And I vote to adjourn. Thank you.